Chair will call the December 20, 2022, meeting of the City Council order at the City of Springfield. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Clerchifey, please call the roll.
Hold here. Alderman Redpath.
Here.
Alderman Gregory.
Here.
Alderman Williams.
Here.
Alderman Fulginsey.
Here.
Alderwoman Purchase.
Here.
Alderwoman D'Senso.
Present.
Alderman McMiniman.
Here.
Alderwoman Conley.
Present.
Alderman Donlin.
Here.
Alderman Hanauer.
Here.
Mayor Langfelder.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, a quorum is present.
Thank you. The first item on the zoning agenda is 2022-059 for the property located at 1815 West Jefferson Street. Petitioner is Roland Law. Present's zoning classification is R2, single-family duplex residence district section 155.017. Requested zoning reclassification to B1 Highway Business Service District section 155.033 and a variance of sections 155.115, regulations for safety curbing to allow for the elimination of safety curbing for parking blocks, 155.480H1, landscape screening and lighting regulations, parking lot landscaping to allow the elimination of points of landscaping requirements for parking lots, 155.480G1 and 2, landscape screening and lighting regulations, front yard, corner yard, or corner side yard and through lot landscaping to allow the elimination of points of landscaping requirements for a street frontage of, and 155.480I1, landscape screening and lighting regulations, transitional buffer yard requirement and landscaping to allow the elimination of a 10-foot transitional buffer yard on the east and north side of the parking lot. A 6-foot privacy fence will be built on the east and north side. Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff recommendation is approval. Planning and zoning commission recommendation is accept the recommendation of the Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff. Chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to accept the planning and zoning commission recommendation.
Second.
Been moved in second to accept the planning and zoning commission recommendation. Second, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. And the zoning passes 10 voting yes, none voting no. Next item on the agenda is docket number 2022-061 for the property located at 2301 South MacArthur Boulevard. Petitioner is BPC Larkspur Springfield LLC. Present's zoning classification is S2, community shopping and office district section 155.031. Requested zoning relief for reclassification of a portion of Lot 5 of the proposed subdivision and site plan attached to the petition from S2, community shopping and office district section 155.031 to B1 Highway Business Service District section 155.033 for condo unit 5B, mini storage internal space for the operation of an indoor climate-controlled self-storage facility, and from S2 to B2, general business service district section 155.034 for that area described as part of condo unit 5B-RV parking for ancillary use of vehicular parking of RVs, boats, and travel trailers in the side yard area and a variance of section 155.052C1B, special requirements for large-scale residential, industrial, multifamily, and commercial development for Lot 5 to permit the existing building designated as a condo unit 5C on the attached site plan to have an existing building approximately 0 feet front yard setback instead of the 20 feet per code, and variance of section 155.114A, regulations of the location of off-street parking facilities for lots 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5 as depicted on the attached site plan to permit parking on the parcel to serve as parking for and between all lots within the Town and Country subdivision development due to a shared access parking easement agreement. Petitioner additionally requests that if reclassifications are not afforded, consideration of the granting of use variances in the S2 district allowing for condo unit 5B mini storage internal space for operation of an indoor climate-controlled self-storage facility and for the area identified as part of condo unit 5B-RV parking for an ancillary use of vehicular parking of RVs, boats, and travel trailers. Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff recommendation is denial of the requested zoning to B1 and B2. In the alternative, recommend approval of a use variance to allow an indoor climate-controlled self-storage facility for condo unit 5B mini storage internal space and a use variance to allow an ancillary use of vehicular parking for RVs, boats, and trailers for part of condo unit 5B-RV parking, providing that, number one, screening for the residents and the middle school is as stated in the petition and its exhibits, and, number two, outside storage is limited to the area in the southwest corner behind the shopping center as stated in the petition and its exhibits. Also approval of the requested variance to section 155.114A and section 155.052C1 and B. Planning and zoning commission recommendation is accept the recommendation of the Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff with the word "travel" in front of trailers. Chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, motion to approve the planning and zoning commission recommendation.
Second.
Been moved in second to accept the planning and zoning commission recommendation. And second, any discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Alderman McMiniman.
I'd just like to acknowledge Mr. David Bernstein of Larkspur Properties flew in from Florida this morning, and you can raise your hand and acknowledge yourself. I know maybe you don't want to stand up. Why? Because one of the airlines lost his baggage on the way up here, so he's dressed more casual than normal. I hope that's a sense of humor you got going with that comment, but thank you for your investment in Springfield. You purchased Town and Country Shopping Center at auction back in June, and you've devised very significant plans to revitalize and rejuvenate Town and Country Shopping Center. So, thank you enormously. Alderwoman D'Senso and I have represented MacArthur Boulevard for these years, and you won't see us if you come back next year beyond April. Why? Because Alderwoman, Erin Conley will be your point person and whoever sits in Alderwoman D'Senso's seat.
Not me.
Say again?
Not me.
Not either of us will be here. So.
I'm sure we'll still work with Ward 7.
And we'll have a new Ward 7, Alderman, too. So, thanks again, Mr. David Bernstein. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yep. Would you like to come up and address the council? Or, yeah, we really appreciate your investment in Springfield, so since you came all this way, we were hoping you'd bring warm weather. You did today.
Again, I apologize. I had a jacket and shoes, and I'm dressed down a little bit for tonight, but I do appreciate the opportunity and really looking forward to the redevelopment of the center and excited to get going if the City Council approves. Thank you again.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Great. All in favor of the motion of the planning and zoning commission recommendation, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. And the zoning passes 10 voting yes, none voting no. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is docket number 2022-062 for the property located at 3,000 Adley Stevenson Drive. Petitioner is QuickTrip Corporation as contract purchaser. Present's zoning classification is B1 Highway Business Service District section 155.033. Requested zoning relief, a petitioner desires to operate a convenience store with two fuel canopies for automobile and tractor trailers with the scale of packaged liquor and requests a conditional permitted use of section 155.033C8. Conditional permitted uses in the B1 Highway Business Service District, liquor sales package exclusive of drive-in or drive-up windows for the sale of alcohol, and 155.210 package liquor sales and a variance of sections 155.033B. Permitted uses in the B1 Highway Business Service District to allow B2 use of scales 155.034B1, scales, commercial weighing in the B1 Highway Business Service District, and 155.114B, regulations of the location of off-street parking facilities, and 155.062C, permitted obstructions, front yard to allow parking spaces in the required front yard. Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff recommendation is approval as submitted. Planning and zoning commission recommendation is accept the recommendation of the Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff. Chair will entertain a motion.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion, but I would like to have a quick discussion if I could, please.
Second. Sure. Should we move for discussion or the motion?
If there's a motion, you can discuss it or invite people to come up to discuss the zoning.
Yes, I just had a few things I want to confirm with QuickTrip.
First, okay, we'll move for discussion.
Motion for discussion.
Yeah, both of you guys.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. We'll go ahead.
So, and I need QuickTrip, too, if she wants to come up. So, as you know, it's always difficult when we're fighting for economic development and something new on that side of town, so, but in sincerity, Glen Air subdivisions did have some questions, and I appreciate you for coming to the Neighborhood Association meeting and answering their questions because it took us a long way. I just want to make sure nothing has changed as far as the entrance and the exit, that they will be exiting, these trucks will be exiting behind Bob Evans and coming up the middle, that road between Bob Evans and the gas station.
Correct.
Correct, okay.
At this point, yes, our site plan is still.
And then the signage would be, on your property, would be your responsibility for those signages that they were requesting, and Nate, after talking with TJ today, we decided we would take care of the adloff side and any signage that may be required there.
That's correct. If we do need signage, we would sign it.
Okay. So, I just really wanted to talk about those things, and then finally, the noise barrier in that trucks idle, and that was one of the concerns of the Neighborhood Association, that in the middle of the night when trucks idle and the air is crisp that it goes through, but I've got the right attitude with all of us that if that becomes an issue, we'll deal with it, and I appreciate you saying we'll deal with it with landscaping and trees and things like that to try to help that out. I went and drove it myself, parked there myself. I think we're going to be fine in it. If we should come up with some issues from talking with you, Nate, and TJ today, we will work through something to try to take care of the Neighborhood Association.
Yeah, I think in the end, the fact of how much traffic is on Adley Stevenson, there's where your noise is primarily going to come from.
Yeah.
We've got the truck traffic pushed as far back to the property. We can do some buffering with some landscaping.
Sure. Well, and I told you, you lived there all these years, you're used to that type of noise. So, I want to thank both of you guys because I know this project was a little challenging, at least for me, because I didn't want to lose it, and at the same time, I didn't want to upset the neighbors, so thank you. So, I would like to recommend approval as recommended from the commissions.
Second.
Okay. Moved in second for approval, and if you could state your name, I know you're a QuickTrip representative, but for the record.
Sure. My name is Gwen Keen, and I'm with QuickTrip.
And your title, please.
I'm the Real Estate Project Manager for this location.
Great.
Be my address.
That's optional, yeah.
2255 Bluestone, St. Charles, Missouri.
And then Alderman Redpath, you had a question?
Yes. Not of you, I'm just going to make a statement. I disagree with the screening that's going to happen. I can tell you that I have the same situation out on Toronto Road with places that have trucks, and it's a, we've put up barriers and everything else. Glen Air subdivision's in for a rough ride here because, yes, there is traffic that comes down Stevenson Drive, but those idling trucks at 2:00 or 3:00 o'clock in the morning, you can hear them for a long way. I will be a no vote on this because I know this is going to affect that neighborhood, and I know it's Alderman Williams neighborhood, but I'm very familiar with it. I'm telling you, it's a bad idea, and I'm going to vote against it. Thank you.
Yes, my understanding that the idling wasn't going to take place, or can you comment on that?
So, with where the truck parks are, they are at the farthest point, pushed back in that kind of already brush area up against the property. We are a smaller pond than other tractor-trailer facilities in the area. We don't have as big a facility. We have very limited truck parks. We don't have lounges, showers. We don't encourage any long-term parking, hence the signage that we will be putting up, that per the ordinance, there's to be no long-term parking there. That will be something that we will work with the city and establish once drivers know that this is not the spot to hang out with because we don't have the amenities that a truck stop typically has, which is why we distinguish ourselves as a travel center, because we want them to come, do what they need to do, and move on their way. And with us being that smaller pond, we don't have near the issues.
Just as a.
So, we will be putting up signage that says no long-term parking and working with the city, engaging on what that needs to be.
And just as a follow-up, there's a, the precinct that's directly behind this is precinct 21, is part of that whole area. They're right behind that timber, so you just got to understand there's more residents that are not to the north that are to the south. And, you know, I hope it works. I really do, because we need the economic development. We want these kind of things, but I really believe, I've experienced it in Ward 1 on Toronto Road. We've had zoning out there several times and inspectors seeing how the tractors that are parking back there, the idling is the big thing. It's not the pulling in and out, it's not the traffic, it's the idling that goes on through the night, so that's my.
Typically, those are the folks that are going to those bigger facilities because they want to stay there. They're national account type of people. Where we focus on is the short hauling, and so we don't have near those issues. And I'm not saying that it will never happen, but it is not something that we see on a regular basis, and working with Councilman Williams, we will gauge what this unfolds, and if we need to add, you know, additional, we will at the time where we can really figure out what is the noise coming from our facility versus what is the stagnant noise already established on Adley Stevenson.
And then can you define long-term parking versus short-term or whatever?
So, the challenge becomes, if you say no overnight parking, is someone that pulls in at 1:00 and leaves at 2:00, is that technically overnight parking? Or what if someone comes in at 6:00 a.m. and leaves at 6:00 p.m.? Well, that's 12 hours, and we don't want them there that long. So, what we do is we try to maintain a presence when we are out on the lots, we have video surveillance, so if we see that there's been a truck that's been there for a while, we've noticed them in the trash pickups, then we'll notify the appropriate people to go do a wellness check on that vehicle to make sure that they need to know that they need to move along.
Alderwoman Conley?
Thank you, Mayor. Just real quickly, how many trucks do you have capacity for on this lot?
I believe, let's see. I don't think it's more than 14. I think it's actually, yeah, it's 14, 13 or 14.
So, there could be 14 trucks idling at any given time.
Possibly, yes. But again, that's not something that we see on our facilities as a common occurrence.
Sure. I just wanted to know what the capacity was. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Is there a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion for approval as recommended.
Moved in second to approve as recommended by the planning and zoning commission recommendation. Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. And the motion passes 9 voting yes, 1 voting no. And that concludes our zoning portion of the meeting. This time, the chair will recognize Treasure Busher for the finance report.
Thank you, Mayor Langfelder. The corporate fund had a beginning balance in the month of November of $60,906,863. We took in total receipts of $10,551,873. We had total disbursements in the month of November of $8,455,336, which left the corporate fund with an ending balance of $63,340. Of that ending balance, Mayor Langfelder, your ARPA fund ending balance included in that is $23,921,211. This concludes my report, Mayor Langfelder.
Thank you. Is there a motion for approval?
No.
Second.
Been moved second, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. We do have one presentation from the Urban Forestry Commission. Steve Outland.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, councilwomen, councilmen. My name is Steve Lane. I'm an urban forestry consultant with Great Lakes Urban Forestry Management out of Batavia, Illinois, a couple hours north of here, and we performed the tree inventory for the city last year as part of the Illinois Department of Natural Resources grant program, and then performed a Phase 2 of that inventory just over the last couple of months, and some of the data I'm going to be showing you today is from that latest round, just kind of showing you what those trees are, where they are, and really, the reason I'm here is to kind of prove the benefit of investing in green infrastructure and investing in trees as part of your overall municipal planning, so I'm happy to take some questions afterwards if we have a little bit of time left over. I'm not going to read through the whole timeline up here, but just so everyone kind of knows how this whole thing came to fruition. At about this time two years ago, the Illinois Department of Natural Resources released about $400,000 in grant funding, which the City of Springfield applied for through the Urban Forestry Commission. They were awarded successfully. We were the vendor for that project, and we got started about a year later, so late in 2021 into early 2022, completed that inventory, delivered the first draft of the management plan that we wrote for that project just a couple of months ago, and then began a Phase 2, which wasn't grant-funded but internally funded, to keep that effort rolling along. And as I'll talk about in a second, you know, one of the issues was Springfield's a big town, okay, and has a lot of trees, and the grant money that came from the IDNR could only cover inventorying about 10% of the trees in town. So, if you ran a business and you only knew what 10% of your assets were, certainly you would have a difficult time running that business. So, the city made the decision to invest in the next 10%, and, you know, we're hoping this effort continues and keeps on rolling in the future, so. Again, just a quick slide up here, we're at about 20% of the total trees inventoried in the town. Primarily, that data has been taken in the downtown area and in the northeast quadrant, which is not necessarily representative of the entire community, right? It's a diverse community all the way around in many different ways, and just knowing one part of it doesn't provide you the ability to extrapolate that to the whole community. So, we're getting a better picture overall of where trees are, where there's the need for more trees, more equity, all of those things, but there's still more work to be done on this, all right? So, every time we collect more data, as we gain more information, we're updating this management plan that uses about a 10-year horizon for how you can bank for things like tree removals, tree pruning, right? Those are things we use to mitigate risk in town, and then things like tree planting, so that we're increasing the number of trees overall on the parkways and caring for the trees that are there appropriately so that they don't become hazardous, and we're really reaping the greatest benefits out of them that we can. Again, I'm not going to walk through this whole slide. You have it available to you to read, but the benefits of trees are many. These are things we don't think about all the time, but filtering pollutants, cooling, all right? If I have a large tree over my home, my air conditioner has to work less hard to cool my home down. That's real dollars you're keeping in people's pockets. There's other things that are a little bit more social science-based. Reduced crime rates have been proven time and time again to go hand in hand with increased tree planting, and in fact, one of the topics you were just addressing here had to do with noise abatement and using landscaping and tree planting. So, trees actually help with a lot of other different things, other than just being nice to look at and helping with pollution reduction. There's a lot of studies showing reduction in stress, overall increases in feelings of health and perception of health. I could talk for hours about those. Not going to, but, you know, one of the things is not everybody speaks tree. So, I'm a certified arborist consultant. I work nationwide, but I think everybody understands money, and I do want to kind of prove to you a little bit here that trees actually provide a hard monetary benefit in all of those ecological services they provide. So, there's a couple of different softwares I encourage you to check out. If you go to iTree and look for a program called My Tree, you can actually enter information about your address and what kind of trees in your front yard, and it'll tell you how many dollars' worth of heating and cooling savings that tree provides you. We ran your full tree inventory through that software, which is a U.S. Forest Service piece of software, and have shown that, I'm going to jump ahead a little bit here, that just the 20% of the trees we've inventoried, right, just that small portion, provides $1.28 million per year in ecological services, right? And that's that heating and cooling savings, aesthetic benefits, curb appeal, stormwater reduction, all those different things, and the standing value of just those trees is $17.78 million. That's 20% of your population, so when you start ramping this up and looking at the numbers further down the line, this is an asset that pays dividends in a lot of different ways. And again, I would ask you to consider my example of the tree over the house providing that cooling savings. If we're able to put $20 more a month in everybody's pockets, that's real money, and that's just one aspect of all of this. Again, another slide here that just shows the iTree software suite and the benefits that get calculated there. It goes into a lot of different stuff, carbon sequestration, pollution reduction, actual oxygen production, how many tons of oxygen those trees produce every year. It's pretty interesting stuff, and I encourage everyone to take a look at the second draft of this management plan when it comes back around. One of the things that, again, and not everybody speaks tree, but we all understand money, one of the things we try and break down is a return on investment for trees. So, this is an ROI that we've calculated, which shows that the ROI of a tree over a 60-year lifespan, which is pretty average for a tree on a parkway, is over 100%. And now, actually, there have been people that have calculated this at up to 200%. We take a more conservative approach, but we look at cradle-to-grave accounting of the money that you put into planting, maintaining, removing a tree over its lifetime, and then the benefits that that same tree provides, and that ROI is over 100% every single time. So, again, just to try and make the case that trees do provide tangible benefits to the community. We also have a lot of social benefits that are out there. Again, I'm not going to go through every single one of these individually, but reduction in crime rates is a correlation that's very, very strong. There have been studies on increases in memory and learning. If we put green space out in front of our schools, students learn better, they retain information better. If you put green space outside of hospitals, people recover faster. This is actual documented evidence. So, again, you know, to make it a little bit relevant to what's going on, if we're talking about doing redevelopment in some critical areas in Springfield, increasing the number of trees comes with other benefits that aren't just tied to hard-dollar things. They're tied to more social benefits that are out there and provable. And one thing I do want to point out here, I actually was meeting with the Department of Natural Resources staff this morning about some grant funding that's going to become available through the Inflation Reduction Act coming up pretty soon here, but one of the things we discussed was how easy of a win urban forestry is. It's a very low barrier to entry. Trees and tree maintenance are not that expensive compared to other things, so I just took kind of a cross-section here of some of the projects that Springfield has done over the last couple of years for triangulation purposes and say that, you know, the 10th Street improvements, 5th and 6th Street improvements, and I-72, you can get to about 80-some-odd million dollars in infrastructure that's been invested in, and rightfully so. And I did just want to point out that based on the numbers that we're looking at, you could fully fund the forestry program for the entire city for the next 50 years, just with the investments listed above. So, at about $1.5 million a year, you could have an extremely robust forestry program compared to other hard infrastructure investments, really not that expensive, and it pays out at over 100% ROI. So, again, these are things not everybody thinks about all the time, but that's kind of why I'm here talking about it, that I think it's a worthwhile thing for the city to keep up with, so. You know, on top of that, I think trees are something we can all really agree on. I like to say trees are like apple pie. Everyone's kind of in favor of them, so socioeconomic, political stature, all those different things, we kind of all come together over trees. It's hard to find somebody who just hates trees. I know a few, but they're hard to find. They do come at a low cost versus other infrastructure, and there are grants out there. So, there's $1.5 billion that's been earmarked through the Inflation Reduction Act, which, you know, love or hate the piece of legislation itself, this is historic funding for our industry, and it's going to be available over a longer period, so normally, these grants are one-year propositions. These are going to be five- to eight-year propositions where you can fund getting the rest of your inventory done for half price, literally, over what it would cost to fund it out of pocket, so. So, the other reason I'm here is to let you know this funding's going to be coming down the pipeline. If this is something the city finds important, which I hope you do, it will never get cheaper to do than half price, so keep keeping your eye out for that. Am I okay on time? Do I have a minute or two?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. You know, in terms of next steps, where we are, like I said, we've collected 20% of the tree data. We have a pretty good picture of what's going on with the city and its trees right now. We certainly don't have a complete picture yet, though. So, two things are really important. Number one is going to be coming up with that wish list. What do you want to do in terms of urban forestry in the community? The way I've heard it said several times is that we really want to shoot for the moon on this, try and get as much funding as possible, get that into managing and mapping out the trees and making a benefit for the community with those ecological services. So, preparing that wish list to have it shovel-ready, as the buzz phrase goes, when that funding is released, is going to put you at the front of the lunch line, and that's important. Outside of that, and then, you know, completing the inventory so you have all the data to make these decisions, you know, we want to finalize and update that urban forestry management plan, maybe make it a 20-year plan instead of a 10-year plan, so we're really planning for the full life cycle of all of these trees and the people that live around them. You know, a lot of the city's tree population right now isn't actually trees. right now isn't actually trees. There are open planting spaces where you could potentially put trees. The more trees we have, the more those benefits go up, the more benefit you're reaping in terms of hard dollars and social services. So creating a long-term planting plan so that when you get money to plant trees, you know exactly where they're going. And I think one of the most important parts in all of this and with urban forestry in general is building partnerships in the community across all of your wards, whoever you represent, to have people get buy-in in this. Like I said, trees are one of those things that most people are kind of in favor of. You hold a volunteer tree planting day, tree watering, pruning, whatever else, you're going to get people that are going to come out from every single one of your wards and be in favor of this. So building those partnerships now will help you accomplish goals in the future. So again, just some things to kind of keep on the radar. And that concludes my presentation. So I will take any questions if anyone has any. And thank you very much to all of you and the city. So.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Steve. Yeah, no, I have questions for you. So two things popped out at me from this. First of all, no one's going to be surprised that sweet gum is one of our most common species of trees.
Yes.
And I'm sure part of that urban forestry plan needs to be no more of those. But actually, of more concern, on the slide before that, you've got some interesting information here on our existing trees. And it says that our average tree condition and our average mature tree condition are well below average. Do you have any insight or thoughts on that? What does that mean, well below average?
Sure. So we rate our condition rating system based on a bell curve, right? So it's just a normalized population. That if I picked any town in the U.S., this is what the tree population should kind of look like. It's not uncommon to have populations be slightly below average like that. So you're well below average, but you're kind of barely well below average. So.
So what's average?
Average, direct average would be three.
Okay.
So and it's like, in our rating system, it's like golf, higher is worse, lower is better. So, you know, if you were 3.2, 3.3, that's getting into like, hmm, that's kind of bad. But you're effectively just a little bit south of average, right? And a lot of that can be taken care of easily. One of the benefits of the inventory is we identify trees, but if you removed one dead limb, all of a sudden, the condition's much better. So actually, the inventory provides the data to make easy decisions to get that condition rating, you know, higher.
And that data has been given to our Public Works Department? Our arborist has that?
Yes, the 20% of the tree population that's been inventoried has been, yes, that's correct.
Okay. And is that the majority of what you saw? I will just tell you, so I've had concerns. I-3 came in. Again, it's a broadband installation in part of my ward. And part of what they do is they dig up and lay their cable. And in the process of doing that, I'm getting concerns from residents about, you know, tree roots being impacted. And this is an area with significantly, you know, significant number of trees, mature trees, and people move there because that's the neighborhood they want. So what other kind of impacts are you seeing? I mean, it probably was not one of the neighborhoods you were looking at. But is it largely they need more trimming? Is it, I mean, we've been, I know Public Works has been working very diligently on the Emerald Ash Borer issue, which has been devastating in my ward.
And that, so that's another thing that the entire state's been, the entire Midwest, the entire country really, has been dealing with, is the effects of Emerald Ash Borer, which took the focus off of standard maintenance for a while. We had to kind of go all hands on deck to deal with ash trees, which meant some of the regular, you know, go to the doctor, get your haircut sort of maintenance things fell behind.
My doctor doesn't cut my hair.
That's, well, you know what I mean, standard maintenance, you know, one or the other, not both at the same time. Unless you have a really good hair cutter. But no, so, you know, that has taken away, and again, I'm not speaking specifically about Springfield, it's been everywhere, that those things have gotten delayed. So that's actually one of the reasons we're doing this, is to try and catch up on some of that maintenance and deliver the data so that they can go out and effectively handle that. So.
Okay. And then we have, so Jeff has the data that he needs, because that's a significant amount of work right there. And he's, you know, one very busy person, I know. But so he has the data he needs for those two sections, the 20%.
That's correct. And actually, you know, it's funny, you should mention too, your comment about he is just one person. One of the things that the infrastructure grant will likely allow people to do municipalities that is traditionally not done with grants like this, is actually to hire staff. So that is another thing to maybe add to the wish list, is that if he's just one person and it's a manpower, person-power issue, then, you know, maybe that's something to look at if we can increase capacity by using this data to make the case. So.
That's wonderful. Thank you very much. This is a lot of information.
And actually, if I made the sweet gum thing, I just want to say, we can't grow them in our neck of the woods. I'm in the northeast part of the state.
I feel like you're bragging.
No, it's just a little bit too cold, and I wish we could plant more of them. And it's, no, it's an interesting thing that you, no, I know about the gumballs, but, you know, it's one of those trees that we actually wish we could use a little bit more, but I do get them.
If you need gumballs, we will collect them and send them to you.
All right. Thank you very much.
Just give us an address.
Okay.
Alderman Williams?
Yes, sir. Thank you for coming.
Yes.
Jeff isn't here, so I don't know if he can answer this or not, but on Eastview subdivision along Eastdale, there was about six trees, and they got cut down.
Please go to your microphone.
They got cut down. All six trees are gone now. And they were fairly young trees. They wasn't mature at all, because the subdivision ain't that old. But I was just wondering if you knew why someone would cut six good trees down like that? Unless it's the ash thing you mentioned earlier or something.
Yeah, to be honest with you, I don't have enough knowledge of exactly what happened with that to speak to it. But there are, you know, utility conflicts, a whole variety of, oh.
I'll check into it, though, with Jeff Reiman, all right, you know, as soon as possible.
I asked Jan as well.
It's a good possibility.
I asked Jan to check in into it as well. I mean, some neighbors called me and just said the trees are gone. And they were nice-looking trees to us. Now, it could be a legit reason why they got rid of them, but all six of those trees are just gone now. So.
And it's unfortunate when that happens. But, you know, ideally, if it was a development thing, and I'm not saying it was, but, you know, it's always nice to see.
They were all dead ash trees.
Okay.
Then why they look so nice?
They don't for very long.
I will say this, even when we have to remove a tree, it's the promise of another tree getting planted after that. So even if you had to remove a dead ash or a sweet gum, right, and put something else back in there and.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
I'm sorry, just one more quick question.
Yes, Alderman Conley.
Yeah, you came into my groove here. Do you include recommendations on invasive species to not include with our plantings, or recommendations on native species?
Yes, very much so. So I'm not, I'm not sure if the original draft of the management plan's been made available yet. But one of the things we do is a long-term forecast, where we look at every species, line by line, the number there are now, and the number we project you want to have in 10 years. So for trees, we want to plant more of, right? If you have 50 ironwoods, we say, well, we really want 150. If I have 50 buckthorn or some other invasive, we say, yeah, we want to get rid of all those. So we did kind of an increase and decrease chart that was pretty data-intensive that it is out there.
But I'm looking forward to seeing that. Bradford pears should never be allowed.
Most growers aren't even growing them anymore. So.
Good. Good to know. All right. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Alderman DeSenzio?
Thank you. This isn't really directed at you, but more of towards Public Works and just the city in general. In older neighborhoods, we have trees that are planted on city easements that then the roots will lift the sidewalks, and then residents just want the trees taken down. So we have to do a better job as a city of planting trees that go in those areas. Because we, as older people, we hate to hear, I want this tree taken down. But we also understand that if it's not an accessible sidewalk that's completely buckled, and I've had several of these, as you know, Director, you know, we have to do a better job of selecting the trees we plant and where we plant them.
Yeah, we do have a desirable list for trees that do not do that. Unfortunately, sometimes homeowners just will plant them themselves. They've been there for a long time. And we're obviously battling the sins of our forefathers. But we'll continue to work on it. And we do have desirable trees that we prefer. People should get a permit from our arbers prior to planting so that we can notify them. And then we're obviously, through our tree planting programs, we're trying to diversify. That's why it's so critical to have this tree inventory, so that we are diversifying our tree canopy.
Great. Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? Well, thank you very much. I'd like to also thank Jan Von Quellen for being here and your efforts on the Urban Forestry Commission. It goes beyond that, so we really appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, Jim.
Chair will entertain a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes at the December 6, 2022, regular city council meeting and approve the minutes.
I'm moved.
Second.
Been moved and second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council first reading of ordinances into the record of the city council meeting.
I'm moved. Second.
Been moved and second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. The chair will entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council reading of the consent agenda into the record of this city council meeting.
I'm moved.
Second.
Been moved and second. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion, place the consent agenda on final passage.
I'm moved.
Second.
Been moved and second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Oh, sorry, you have to vote on that one, instead of a unified vote. And the consent agenda passes. 10 voting yes and 10 voting no. Agenda number 2022-384, 2022-463 remain tabled or in committee. Next item on the agenda is 2022-510, an ordinance annexing certain described real properties located in 22-12.0-127-45045. The chair will entertain a motion, place agenda number 2022-510 on final passage.
I'm moved.
Second.
Been moved and second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. And the motion carries, ordinance carries, 10 voting yes and 10 voting no. Next item on the agenda is 2022-511, an ordinance annexing certain described real property located at 55 Orchard Lane. Chair will entertain a motion, place agenda number 2022-511 on final passage.
I'm moved.
Second.
Been moved and second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. And the ordinance passes. 10 voting yes, 10 voting no. Next item on the agenda is 2022-521, an ordinance authorizing a supplemental appropriation in the amount of $333,812 from unappropriated fund balance to correct the fiscal year '23 budget allocations for fleet maintenance for the Office of Public Works. Chair will entertain a motion, place agenda number 2022-521 on final passage.
I'm moved.
Second.
Moved and second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. And the ordinance passes. 9 voting yes, 1 voting no. Next item on the agenda is 2022-524.
I'd like to make a motion for an ominous vote for agenda items number 2022-524 through 535, and they're all either appointments or reappointments.
Second. Second.
Been moved and second for an ominous vote with regards to 2022-524, or, yeah, 524 through 2022-535. Any discussion?
Yes.
Yes, Alderman.
I believe Ms. Smith is here. She's one of the appointees.
Yep. Yeah, whoever's here can come up. And all in favor, say, for the ominous vote, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. So I'll read them in. And those present, if you can come up and introduce yourself, we'd appreciate it. Agenda number 2022-524, an ordinance approving the reappointment of Jeff Tucker to the Springfield Municipal Ban Commission. Agenda number 2022-525, an ordinance approving reappointment of Sheila Stocksmith to the Springfield Economic Development Commission. Agenda number 2022-526, an ordinance approving the appointment of Mark Mahoney to the Housing Policy Advisory Council. Agenda number 2022-527, an ordinance approving the appointment of Audra Burke to the Housing Policy Advisory Council. 2022-528, an ordinance approving the reappointment of Greg Kruger to the Springfield-Sengman County Regional Planning Commission. 2022-529, an ordinance approving the reappointment of Joseph Gooden to the Springfield-Sengman County Regional Planning Commission. 2022-530, an ordinance approving the reappointment of Amy McCune to the Springfield Urban Forestry Commission. 2022-531, an ordinance approving the reappointment to Jan Von Quellen to the Springfield Urban Forestry Commission. 2022-532, an ordinance approving the reappointment of Erskine Rute to the Springfield Urban Forestry Commission. 2022-533, an ordinance approving the reappointment of Ernestine Lawrence to the Springfield Urban Forestry Commission. 2022-534, an ordinance approving the appointment of Colleen Accariano, I know I butchered that name, to the Police Community Review Commission. 2022-535, an ordinance approving the reappointment of Rabbi Lynn Goldstein to the Board of Managers of Oak Ridge Cemetery. And it's been moved and second. Those of you that are present, if you come up and introduce yourself or reintroduce yourself, we'd appreciate it.
Hi, Mr. Mayor, council members. I'm Sheila Stocksmith. I live at 2235 Greenbrier Drive. I don't know what you want me to say, but I can, you know, I've been active in the community for a long time. I've lived in Springfield over 30 years. I've served in a number of different capacities with economic development, community development kind of work. I've served on many boards and commissions in this community. I've been the education liaison for the, under Mayor Davlin, and a number of things. I've served on the Mid-Illinois Medical District. And, you know, I've served on the Springfield Project Board twice, and a number of other boards and activities throughout this community. I've enjoyed my tenure on this committee. I hope that we bring some value to the process for you.
Great.
If you have any questions.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council members. My name is Colleen Accariano. You didn't do too bad on that. I'm here tonight, as you know, I'm seeking an appointment for the Police Community Review Commission. I'm a former Granville police officer. I worked for the Village of Granville for about six years. I resigned from that position to stay at home with my son and finish my college degree. After graduation, I worked as a truancy caseworker for the Regional Office of Education. I left that position, and I bought an existing daycare that had been in business for 20 years. We have about 74 kids there and 16 staff. For the last six years, I've been overseeing the day-to-day operations of the daycare center. And at this time, it's running smoothly on its own. And I feel like this would be a good way to give back to my community, and I have some time to do so.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions, comments? Great. All in favor of the appointments, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open.
I'll make that motion.
Oh, sorry. Yep. Alderman Donlan makes the motion to approve, second by Alderman Purchase. Any other questions or discussions on the appointments? All in favor, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. And the voting's now open and passes 10 voting yes, 10 voting no. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is 2022-541, an ordinance authorizing execution of a redevelopment agreement with Andarondak Community Development LLC for the financial assistance for the property located at 301 North Fifth Street, utilizing only tax increment finance funds generated by the project for an amount not to exceed $4,565,039 for the Office of Planning and Economic Development. Chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number 2022-541 on final passage.
Followed.
Second.
Been moved and second. Any discussion? Alderman Repath?
Yes, Mayor, we just got the developers' agreement at 5 o'clock. I think we need to hold this until next time, because we need a chance to look through that. So I'll make that motion.
Second.
Second.
Discussion? I think the developer's here. So I think if you'd like to come forward, I think there's a time crunch situation with the end of the year coming up.
Yes, I'd just like to, I understand that the developer agreement was sent. I think what we would like, what we respectfully ask you to do is to vote, to move this forward legislatively. Obviously, the developer agreement's going to be negotiated with the city council. I think the standard terms of that agreement are fairly customary for the city, which is that 51% of the labor be local Springfield residents. And I'd really like to try to move this along. We are concerned that, you know, with interest rates rising, I know the Fed raised rates only by half a point, or, yeah, 50 bips instead of 75, which a lot of people were afraid of. But rates are going up. At some point, we'd like to go lock in our financing as quickly as possible. This is still a very rate-sensitive environment, and all our numbers are predicated on rates not going up that much more. So what I would, you know, I think there's going to be plenty of time for a city council to review the documents and provide input. to review the documents and provide input during the 90 to 120 days that the TIF process and everything is going to take. And, you know, we'll get it done in that time period, but I would, you know, respectfully request that if the city is interested in doing this, that we move this along so we can really advance into the next step with our lenders. You know, we've taken it as far as we can go on kind of a hope and a prayer that the city's going to do this. To really move forward, though, and try to get everything locked in as quickly as possible, you know, this legislation will be, it'll be important to provide our lenders to really show them that the city is behind this and that it's, you know, not just the developer telling them, or, you know, somebody from economic development team saying that the city's working on this. It really puts teeth behind it, so.
And it's, and your financing dependent on the formation of the TIF, which will take three months to four months.
Correct, but we could, we will be able to, you know, go proceed through the formal underwriting and actually start locking in rates and things like that with our lenders. So that's what we'd like to really progress to, to really just try to get that moving. Again, every, you know, every Fed meeting is another opportunity for rates to go up, and at some point, it, you know, it'll be the straw that breaks the camel's back. So hopefully, we can really get this done quickly and move forward as quickly as possible. But I think there will be, and I, you know, defer to Corporation Council, but there should be ample opportunity to, for the council to provide feedback during this process.
And just to maybe address procedurally, ordinarily, we're doing a development agreement after the TIF exists. This is kind of a reverse scenario because this contemplates and contingent, your financing and so on, is going to be contingent on actually doing the TIF and these items. But recall, the TIF and everything has to come back to the council, ordinances, public hearings. There's also the pledge of the enterprise zone. We have to pass separate ordinances for that. So what I think they're in the position of trying to do is to see if there's at least a contingent commitment, so you can go and try to lock in your financing, but even the financing will have contingencies of being able to get TIF and, you know, projects and so on. So in a way, this is a little backwards because normally, the TIF would be already existing.
Right. Typically, the TIF will be created, or before it's actually in place, will enter into these agreements. So it's somewhat unusual that we're looking at them now, and I think, as I understand it, I think there was an effort made to provide a draft quickly so that people can start providing their feedback, but, you know, I would, I would not, there will be plenty of opportunity, I believe.
And to keep in mind, the development agreement is the same agreement that we've used in virtually every single prospect, with the one exception of Legacy Point where there were certain nuances there. And in this case, what I tried to do was just highlight the two provisions that I think the developer's primarily focused on, which is, is the city willing to consider creating a targeted TIF just for that area, for just this development? And the language in there also prohibits money coming from other TIFs. And that was the issue about deporting and so on. The second component is the enterprise zone, which this council has to pass an ordinance, there has to be a public hearing, and then it actually has to go to the county because they also have to approve the extension of the enterprise zone area. So the entire process is going to take probably 120 to 150, 160 days over the next three or four months, going through the normal process. So there's a lot more activity that actually has to happen. If that's of any help, because we're actually doing it a little backwards because normally, the TIF already exists. In this case, it does not.
Alderman Williams?
Well, I don't want to be the one to hold it. I mean, I put it on debate because I had issues about women and people of color in this diverse workforce that you spoke on, and to see what the agreement looked like. And I'm glad that it did come at five. So if I'm hearing that there's going to be time to address those kind of issues later, for sure, just to be clear, I think it's a good project. I think that, you know, it would be good for Springfield, but I just have some specific areas dealing with who's going to build it and how, that maybe I can ask later, so. Thank you.
Yeah, I think there's some questions on the PLA. I think last meeting, you had said you're open to that.
Yes, and I actually have had dialogue with Aaron Guernsey about that, and, you know, we gave him our commitment that we will be entering into a PLA, and I told him I would mention that at city council as well. So I am assuring everyone here that I, we will be entering into that.
Alderman McMinema?
Yeah, thank you for being here again from Minnesota, is that right?
I'm from New York, actually, but yes. Don't hold that against me, please.
You know, I understand the concern, but usually, we really want to see that redevelopment agreement upfront, but as our city attorney has explained, this is a boilerplate redevelopment agreement, and the two unique features of it are the dedicated TIF district, which we're going to get to weigh in on again because it'll have to come to us with ordinances, and the enterprise zone, which is also going to have to come to the city council for approval. So really, it's kind of a policy decision tonight. Do we want to approve this dedicated TIF and the enterprise zone? Because that's, those are the two unique features of the redevelopment agreement. And as far as the TIF, I mean, this is a self-financed project in the sense that you're only going to get money from that TIF if the assessed value of that vacant parking lot somehow becomes so much more valuable with 136 units on it, and that, that's the money that you're going to get to use down the road.
That's, that's right, and we're paying, we're keeping the tax basis on the lot as it is. We'll be going to the city. The rest will be essentially self-contained within this district. So, yeah, the taxes that we pay in are what will service the debt. So it's kind of a self-funding micro-TIF, if you will, and it's getting carved out of the other TIF. And as Corporation Council said, it will, there will be no leakage between the larger TIF that this site sits in.
And so you're trying to advance this approval tonight because you're trying to line up financing in this rate environment, which keeps changing with the Federal Reserve Board keeping, increasing the rates, which then impacts your financing. So I think you've made a good cause for us to pass this tonight, and I hope we do.
Thank you.
Alderman Donlan?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Zirkel, I appreciate that clarification. I brought up the issue last week about how I like the concept with this proposal that we are indeed, the developer would be taking advantage of the, if the project is successful, the developer's successful. The risk would be on the developer, not on the city. I like that concept. But I will take issue with something you said earlier, and please don't be offended by this, but when we, when we pass this ordinance, there is no more negotiating on redevelopment agreement. The redevelopment agreement will be, will have been approved. So my concern is, and it's a lighter concern, it's not like, we don't know the general, but devils in the details, we haven't had an opportunity to review the document. I'd just like an opportunity to review the document, make sure the i's are dotted, t's are crossed. I like the concept of the risk being shifted to the developer. You know, there's a lot of steps. We alluded to this going on for another, potentially another half a year, to remove the property from an existing TIF district, create a new TIF district. There's a lot of steps that, public hearings and so forth. And I need, I do have a question, though, about, you mentioned locking in rates. So if we were to pass this ordinance tonight, in other words, there would be no negotiating with the city because we've already agreed to an international redevelopment agreement.
No, I just, I.
What allows you to lock in the rate?
Well, pardon me, I just want to, sorry to interrupt, but I just want to, as I understand it, if you pass this ordinance, that does not mean that you have approved the actual development agreement. It just allows the process to continue so that the city can start forming it. I believe the development agreement is, while mentioned, is not a, it's not tied to the, this current legislation. Corporation Council, is that accurate?
The, the ordinance contemplates our boilerplate agreement being in place, but it's going to be subject to the TIF as it's created and the enterprise zone. If the, if the city is unable to create the TIF district, then the entire process is basically nullified. Or if the enterprise zone is not approved, the entire project is contingent on those subsequent actions taking place.
We're saying the same thing, Mayor, if I can, I mean, just different, different ways of saying it. All I'm saying is the redevelopment agreement, we as a council have provided the authority to execute a redevelopment agreement. All these other things, obviously, the redevelopment agreement, as Mr. Zirkel clearly stated, goes away if these things don't occur. I mean, I understand that. Anyway, I just, it's a matter of just not having an opportunity to review the agreement. We've had, and I know that you weren't, maybe it's good for you, you weren't involved in these prior discussions. We've had many heated discussions in this horseshoe about not getting the redevelopment agreement beforehand, and anyway, that's, I think, the gist of why we're making this
Yeah, I guess the question is.
Subject of conversation this evening, that's all.
Sorry, go ahead.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Mayor.
Yeah, really, to clarify it, can the developer's agreement be changed when we approve the TIF? Or is that locked in?
Of course, I mean, if, if, the parties can always agree to add conditions or change conditions through the process, meaning the, you know, a developer's agreement provides for amendments. We've done it in other examples where times been changed, scope's been changed. So the development agreement, it can be subject to changes or amendments by either party requesting it, which requires the approval of both parties. So it's not a, it's a little bit of an awkward circumstance simply because we don't have the TIF in place. Otherwise, it wouldn't be quite so, perhaps, confusing on the process because we've got, in a way, have the cart before the horse because we're trying to get the concept of the project approved, but it's still contingent on all these other things happening. And it is subject to other amendment because you never know what will happen if the actual bids go out, what the amounts are. You don't know the circumstances that might require further changes. Look at Legacy Point. It was changed, I think, three times, you know, through that, you know, through the process.
So the developer's agreement can be changed?
Of course, yeah.
Thank you.
And we've done it with others on several circumstances, both time and scope and money.
Alderman Conley?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you very much for coming in and dealing with these questions. Again, I think this is a great project, and I'm extremely sympathetic to your concerns about locking in, or at least getting a preliminary lock on interest rates. I've seen what they're doing, and it is, I'm not putting this much money out, this is, that could be very daunting. My frustration with this is not with the project, per se. This concept of having a developer's agreement where the ordinance literally is an ordinance authorizing execution of a redevelopment agreement. The fact that we don't have that from the, from the administration before we walk into this room is an issue. Alderman Williams, it was an issue in your project, and at that time, I told you, I committed to you at that point, as I would with any, we have to be consistent. This is important because this is when we lock in our part of this. We can't come back and negotiate with you unless you want to. Mr. Zirkel, you mentioned if the city actions fail, then the redevelopment agreement fails, but, you know, you've committed to PLAs, but that's not in writing. Would you agree to an amendment right now that requires PLAs for the work on this project as part of this redevelopment agreement?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's all contemplated in, is part of the TIF, so we'd have no problem with that. And I mean, we'd have no problem with the development agreement being subject to approval of city council. I think what we'd like to have happen is the legislation be, legislation be voted on so that we can then take it to, again, we're kind of, we're at a point where until there's a vote taken by the city council, we can only, we can't go really much further with, with our lenders because it's sort of pie in the sky. So what we're trying to ask you to do is let's take it from pie in the sky and put it into an actual working path where there may be some documentation that needs to get a secondary approval, but the concept's been approved, and now we're, now we're just, you know, we're dealing with fine points as opposed to whether there's going to be a TIF and an expansion of the enterprise zone.
Okay, because I personally, I don't have a problem with that. I think that the way this TIF is designed is, it's creative enough, it puts a lot of pressure on you, although I do think that this is going to be a very successful project. The need for prep housing in that, that part of town is critical, and we've seen that over and over. So, Mr. Zirkel, can we amend the redevelopment agreement to include a requirement that PLAs will be entered into for this project?
If the, if the developer is in agreement with that, we cannot force that. If the developer is in agreement with that, then it certainly can be included. And what I've heard the developer indicate today is that they are in agreement with a provision like that, if I understood what you said.
Yes.
Yeah, because keep in mind with Poplar Place, I think the, what he's received, again, from Aaron Guernsey, was what the city had signed with regards to our fire stations. You know, that's a template PLA, but I'm sure in Alderman Williams' case, he'd like what was proposed in Poplar, because that hit to the diversity issue that you brought up. So that's something that would have to be worked through.
To reflect the same agreement as Poplar Place has, or as close to it as I can get.
So, and again, so my concern is, we have a developer here who wants to move forward and lock in financing. That is a concern. I mean, I would like to know that this financing is secure, that this project has what the city council can give to it, but also, I'd like to know that our residents, our, you know, our local workforce is protected through an agreement for PLAs to be in place. So I would make a motion that this redevelopment agreement includes a commitment from the developer to engage in PLAs with the appropriate construction industries.
Sure, but keep in mind what really protects our residents is the, what's in code. That's 51% of projects that the unions or whoever does the work has to make that effort with residents, and that's what the difference with Poplar was. So we're all in favor of that. So as was said, do the PLA if you want to make that amendment. That's something that we'll work through, just like you're bringing up tonight. Nobody knows what the PLA is. I mean, we have the template that we use for the firehouses, and that's what's been proposed. He hasn't had a chance. I don't know if you've received it, or I think you received it. I don't think he had a chance.
No, I actually received it today, so I haven't had a chance to review it. But again, I, you know, we understand, just like we know what the developer agreement generally is going to say, we understand what the, what's going to be in it broadly speaking, and it's, you know, just reviewing the language, having our lawyers look at it, and, you know, dotting the i's and crossing the t's. So, you know, there's nothing in either the form developer agreement that we've seen or the PLA that we've seen that was, you know, concerning, but, you know, they're not, they're not signed yet or anything like that. But again, we're committed to doing that. We understand that that's an essential part of making this deal happen, and, you know, we're happy to do it. So, you know, we just are looking to get through this, you know, legislative hurdle so that we can really, you know, again, we can really start moving forward, you know, with something more than just, you know, until there's something from the city that indicates that this is happening, we've taken it as really as far as we can go.
And to tie it back to, I think someone mentioned Legacy Sports Complex, that's one of the things we offered because they spent time trying to work through a PLA. It didn't come to the council till after that was done, and that's delayed things quite a bit. So we offered on that project, and that's what we're saying here, is just put it in the developer's group, because then you move the process forward without chewing up time, and you work through that as, you know, you have to do the hearings, notifications, and that all goes simultaneously.
Yeah, and every, and every city operates differently, but typically, we're, you know, we're used to entering into agreements where the legislation will be passed, and then the agreements are entered into later as part of like closing on the TIF and everything.
Right.
You know, it's, you know, we're not, you know, we're not trying to hide anything or, you know, it's just, usually, those agreements come after the broad concept's been, been approved, then it's kind of, and again, I'm happy to, to advance this and to give the council comfort. You know, we're happy to make whatever final agreements could be subject to city council approval. It's one more step, but we're happy to do that so that you guys are still, you know, still have a seat at the table and you don't feel the table, and you don't feel like this vote is, is taking that out of your hands. That's not the intent.
And I will tell you, my question is not, my intent, my question is not to say, hey, will you agree to a specific PLA and tie your hands right here? That would be as unfair to you as it is to us to get a development agreement right before the meeting. And I would never want to do that to someone else. My, my question is, would you be open to having that commitment to entering into PLAs on this project as part of the redevelopment agreement?
Yes.
Okay.
Alderman Gregory?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, you know, and I, I agree with Roy. Now, I, I have no will to hold your project up, because I'm, I'm very, very interested on, in, in the TIF portion and the enterprise zone, which is, which is meant for impoverished areas to get incentives and employ people in these situations. So, the extension of that is really, you know, for me, is really, really going to be dependent on something that we're talking about with this developer agreement and the workforce that, that you mentioned before, being, being diverse. You know, me and, me and Alderman Williams, we had a long, long talk about this, about the difference between, you know, Poplar Place and their PLA agreement and, and things of that nature that we have over there, and, and, and with this project, and as well as other projects. And, you know, I, I, I think, you know, and it makes me think back to, you know, a resolution that we passed back in 2020, that, you know, some of, some of the nine points, two of the nine points, one of those was, was to deal with, with our procurement process. And, you know, these situations are really ensuring that, that our, when we use city money, that, that, that workforce reflects our city, and I think that's fair. So, with that said, I, I, you know, I, I would be comfortable voting for this, knowing that you have to come back, you know, and, and get a TIF, as well as the enterprise zone passed, and, and that your financial package would be dependent on those being passed. So, it does sound like each, each, you know, one of us has some different things that, that we would like to see, whether it's in that TIF or section, or whether it's in the enterprise section. So, even if this passed, you have some work cut out for you on the, on the deal, and, you know, I would support.
Oh, we're, we're aware. This is the beginning. So, this really just allows us to really start, you know, attacking this project and.
No, and, and I agree. And, you know, I, I'm, I've heard good things from, from constituents in, in Ward Five about this project, and about the, the city really, really getting with development. So, I pay attention to those things. I'm conscious of those things. But I also, you know, stick with, with making sure that workforces are diverse, and, you know, projects coming forward, we probably need to look at, you know, we, we had a project with a PLA that's got 30% on it. This PLA, we don't know what, you know, this will be. So, so after this, after we come back from Christmas break, we probably need to look at a uniform minimum requirement that we want to see for, for, you know, in a diverse workforce type of deal, so, so we don't have to, you know, guess what the, what the PLA or what we want to see in our workforces, you know, here and now. So, I appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Hennar?
Thank you. Much like you, you, I'm, I'm trying, I, I try to keep my votes consistent. We had Poplar Place, and, and we held it for, I think, what was it, two weeks?
Two weeks.
It was two weeks, I think. And, and we had the same situation, okay? Much like you just said, that you, you know, you were handed a PLA, but you said, well, you know, we got to look at it first. We, we got to look at it first. We, we haven't seen anything. We, you know, we just received the, the, the draft of the developer's agreement tonight. I don't, I understand you want to lock in, but we're in the middle of holidays right now. Two weeks, I don't think is going to hurt you. And I, I, I think we can have, once we all look at everything, it's much, much like Poplar Place. We'll, we'll get this hammered out. You can look at the stuff that you've got, your company can. We all get back together, and we, we, we hammer this thing, get this thing done. But I think it needs a wait, two weeks. I, I really do, because you obviously haven't had a chance to look at things that you were provided, and we certainly haven't. And I don't feel comfortable making one company wait and not making the other. It's about consistency here, for me. That's.
I, I understand your, I understand your, your approach. Again, I would, I would say it's, it's a little unusual to have actual project-level agreements drafted up this early when, you know, we haven't even designed the building yet. We, this is all, what we're asking you to do today is to really provide the, the, the structure, the benefits that will allow us to do that. There is so much work that needs to be done, and agreements that need to be entered into. So, I appreciate what you're saying, but I, I, it is not, at least in my experience, and again, everyone has a different experience, but it's not common where you'll have these project-level agreements drafted up this early in the process. You typically have, you know, they're, they're, they have to be drafted, and the terms have to be satisfactory to the parties, and there's usually language like that in there. But, you know, those agreements, and if, and if those agreements aren't entered into, then there's no benefit. So, it's, they're contingent on it. But, you know, to, to start drafting documents, you know, this is where, as you said, it's holidays. It's this, it's that. You know, it very easily, two weeks could go by, four weeks could go by, then, who knows? You know, I don't think any of us thought, you know, Russia would invade Ukraine last February. So, the world's can, things can happen. And what I, again, the reason I, I would strongly, you know, recommend and appreciate if you could find a way to, to have a vote today, is again, that allows us to at least move forward where we're not getting tied up in details. And again, I don't think there's anything that I expect that's going to derail us, but we're, we're talking about project-level agreements that are, you know, being entered into months before we're anywhere near getting to that point, so.
Yeah, with regards to that, you are, you're not familiar with Poplar, but the Poplar Place, what that got caught up on was the PLA. So, here, here you have a developer saying, you know, like you said, he hadn't had a chance. He received it today. He's, you know, he's going on trust that we'll be able to work through a solution, and that's what he's asking for, and is spelled out by corporate council with the redev- on agreement. The risk is on the developer. It's his money. If it, project goes, it's going to be taxes generated from his project going in for the benefit of that block. And that's not lose sight of the TIF, because that project in itself, the block sat there for 50 years undeveloped. And so, what this is going to have is a domino impact of the area, for downtown, for the medical area. I think somebody, Michael Higgins in the audience, I'm sure he's going to come up shortly, since he signed up, and same with some others. But one of the things he always emphasized is needing people downtown, and that's 24/7. If you want to change downtown, now's our chance. 136 units of market rate housing. So, he's just asking for the green light to pursue financing. And the developer's agreement is what it is. It's a template. It's spelled out to, with regards to creating the TIF. He'll do the PLA. Well, I'm sure we're going to amend it, so it has, and it's just, no transfers of other TIF funds can go in, so it secures just what's generated from the project to fill the gap of financing. And so, that's what, we don't want to lose sight of, because Poplar Place, that PLA was, that's what the discussion was about, was the PLA. It wasn't the financing. We had the documentation of financing, things of that nature. And it was taking TIF dollars directly out of the TIF, and the millions of dollars, where this one is generated from the project in itself. Alderwoman DeSento?
Thank you, Mayor. The look of frustration I'm seeing on your face and hearing in your voice is what we feel when we get an email at 4:47 with 20 pages to review, when the meeting starts at 5:30. And this is common practice, and this is not aimed at you. We're supportive of this project, but it's irresponsible of us to not read the agreement and then vote on something that we have no idea what's in it. You know, it gets, and, and, and this whole comparison to Legacy Point, do you know how much work I put into Legacy Point in every single aspect of that, and calling every single alderman, and talking to every single neighborhood association and labor? So, you know, the, if we're talking about consistency, which I think we are, that took so long, because, not, not because we were holding it up, because we wanted to get it right. And we want to get this right for you, and we want to get this right for the city. And we're not able to do that if we don't even get a chance to read it. So, I share your frustration. I'm supportive of this project. I want to make sure it gets done in the correct way.
Oh, I understand the time, because I put in tons of time on the Legacy Point.
Me too.
I had to steer that project forward with the hotel tax, with the sales abate, cell tax abatement and all of that, and wait for, you know, other scenarios to come into place, which he's trying to work towards. And so, what we should take, we should take heed to Legacy Point, because that groundbreaking should have happened long ago, but it hasn't yet, because they're still trying to.
Not because of that, Mayor.
They're still trying to put the financing together, even though we've heard.
That had nothing to do with what we did here.
Even though we've heard, even though we've heard.
Nothing to do with what we did here.
That once the school district approves it, then it's going to come forward, but it didn't. And so, you have this continual domino impact of financing, trying to put pieces in place post-pandemic. It's not an easy thing to do. That's what the developer's asking for, is our assistance. If we believe in the project, we should let him take the risk and develop a block that has been sitting bacon for 50 years. Alderman McMinimo?
Wait, I'm not finished. I, I think, I think that, you know, if you spoke to the developer of Legacy Point, he would have a very different version of those events, and how that all went down. Because there was a lot of waiting on the developer's side for the city to take action. So, I don't want to hear any of that, so that we can crank out a developer's agreement, you know, 20 pages, that we don't even have a chance to read. It's, again, I've, I've set it up here before. I'm not sure how that works, or just, interesting turn of events, that's all.
Well, we, hopefully, we will have Legacy, they've been invited to come back time and time again to have the discussion, so hopefully, the Legacy Point, you know, developers do come to the city council and pay us, courtesy that they've done, other taxing bodies. Alderman McMinimo?
Yeah, we need to pass this tonight, even if it's a close vote. I think we do know what's in this redevelopment agreement. It's a boilerplate redevelopment agreement with two unique features, which is the new TIF that we create, and it's extending the enterprise zone. Now, I think our city attorney has told us that we have to approve that TIF agreement later on, and the redevelopment agreement is contingent upon the approval of the TIF district and the extension of the enterprise zone. What our city attorney is telling us is that this council can kill this project. It'd be the worst thing we could do, but the, this council can kill this project by not agreeing to the TIF district down the road. So, we, you know, we've got three bites of the apple here. We can, if, if we, we approve this tonight, and then we can still come back, and it'd be the worst thing we could do to kill the project. Now, I also want to make a, a comment, that this is different than the Poplar Place in a number of ways. Poplar Place already had a TIF, and we're spending money out of that TIF that already existed. Number two, Poplar Place was basically funded with all public monies coming out of the Illinois Housing Development Authority. This is private money and being financed from future private growth from a private development project. So, let's send a signal that we're trying to make development happen downtown, and we're trying to encourage this man, who's come from New York, and his company, and let's get this done tonight. We, 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 this is a no-brainer, really, from my 12 years on the council.
Alderman Repath?
So, could I get a clarification from Corporation Council? This, the developer's agreement, is, is it tying the TIF thing to this whole project? The TIF is all in what we're going to agree to tonight if we pass this. Is that correct?
What it, what it says is that the city agrees to pursue establishing a TIF, a targeted TIF, for these particular parcels, with the funds to be used to fund the project, and no TIF monies coming from outside. However, it provides for basically a contingency, because the council still has to have hearings, you know, ordinances. There has to be a plan. There's a, there's a process that we go through to create a TIF. You know, PGAV will come, and they'll show a plan, what it looks like, et cetera, et cetera. And so, that process has to happen. The agreement, in a sense, really puts all of the risk on the part of the, I hate to say it so bluntly, but on the part of the developer, because if the council doesn't act, the, the sole remedy is really you don't go forward with the project.
So, my question.
So, I'm, I'm sorry.
Sorry, go ahead. Finish. I'm sorry.
I, I was just going to say that there are ordinances and additional actions and activities, documents, et cetera, that have to follow on. The development agreement is totally contingent on the city's willingness to proceed with the establishment of the TIF, also that enterprise zone expansion. You may recall that there was one that was done just recently with Christian Horizons, where we extended the, the enterprise zone. So, there are multiple steps that the council still has to take. The risk is really on the part of the developer, because if the actions don't occur, then the remedy is you don't go forward with the project.
So, I think.
That helps, I'm not sure.
The, the other part of the spoke in the wheel of this whole thing is the PLA. And you've said you have talked to Labor and agreed to sign the PL, sign a PLA with Labor. Is that correct?
Yes.
Would you, would, I think we could pass this thing if we were all in, in agreement, that we feel comfortable that they're going to sign the PLA. And could we make the, the TIF contingent upon the, that the, that the PLA has to be signed? Can we tie it to that, Corporation Council?
The, I think, what I had heard earlier, and what I think there was a motion on, was that we would insert a clause at the request of the developer, agreement of the developer, to require the.
Require these PLAs. I'm still waiting on a second for my motion.
Well, I, I think we're both going around the bar in different directions, but I think this is where we're got to be.
I'm saying that I think the developers agreed that we can insert that provision in the, in the agreement. So, if the council adopts that, then that will become part, in other words, another contingency. What you're really doing is establishing another contingency.
Establishing another contingency under, under the developer's obligations.
That is correct.
So, are you, are you in agreement with that?
Yes.
If, if that's the case, then I think that we've covered the area that we're, we're concerned with, which was basically the developer's agreement and the PLA. This is going to be covered, because now we have a contingency that we're going to fold into this ordinance that's going to, that's going to, I know, it was your idea. I'm not trying to take your idea.
No, I'm just asking for a second on the motion.
I'm just, I'm just saying, if that's the.
Second.
If that makes it safe for us to do that, then I think we ought to pass this. If, if the, if the council is, is in consent, consensus on this.
Yep. So, Alderwoman Conley made that motion, seconded by Alderwoman DeSento, to include language with the developer's agreement with regards to establishing a PLA.
With the relevant, with relevant unions that would be working on this project. And again, not tying you to any specific language at this point. But again, my, my concern with all of this is.
Both parties have to be agreed.
Right. My concern with all of this is, and again, I, I'm trying to read this while we're sitting here. There are city obligations in here. The city agrees to establish this TIF. Okay, but what happens if it doesn't? I mean, that, that does concern me. We've agreed to do that. We, as a council, are agreeing to this. And there's nothing in here that says that, what you have very explicitly stated, and, and absolutely, I appreciate you saying that. I like things in writing, so we have something to protect our city too.
And I even exchanged, I even exchanged an email with Aaron Guernsey of the Central Illinois Builder and Construction Trades Council, to this effect, that saying that we will agree to, he wanted an email to that effect, and we did. And I don't know, Alderwoman Purchase, I don't know if he'd mentioned that to you or not.
He did. I spoke with him right before. I was going to ask the same thing Aaron did, but I just wanted to give my colleagues a chance to speak before I had spoke.
Okay. So, I already did exchange an email with him, assuring him that we would enter into a PLA. So, I'm fully comfortable with, with these proposed amendments, and I, I think that's a good solution for everyone, where we can advance the ball and still give you guys an opportunity to, to, to consult and to be involved in the process as we move forward.
Thank you very much for that.
Alderwoman Purchase?
That was basically what I was going to say, is that I had spoke with Aaron before the meeting, and he did ask and request for you to put that in. And I was just going to ask, could an amendment have been done, because I had spoke with him right before. But Aaron did it, so I'm fine with it as well, because you're going to move forward doing it. But Aaron did it, so I'm fine with it as well because you're going to move forward with doing it. And I just, I wanted to be safe tonight. So I know Alderman McMinimah said he didn't, if it's a close vote to take it. But if I didn't feel comfortable hearing my colleagues speaking on it, I was going to play it safe and still ask for it to be held. But I feel like now it's a consensus that it'll move forward.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Alderman Gregory?
So my, my only question would be, so along with that, you know, PLA, are you, are you committed to, to some type of minority workforce numbers of women and minorities on this project?
Yeah, I think we said that previously as well. I mean, obviously, we need to work out those details, but we are committed to that.
I would like to be a part of that. And Alderman Gregory, if you want to speak with me about that, I'm more than happy to talk with you. But we have stressed that to him as of last Tuesday when we met.
Well, I just haven't heard any numbers, so I, I mean, if we can make contingency plans on that, then I just was just asking some, some questions. But, you know, I take you at that word. I don't want to hold this project up. I don't, but I just, you know, if we can, you know, make contingencies on PLAs and stuff, then we can think about our workforce being diverse, whether we're going to go 5%, 10%. I don't know. That's totally up to your commitment and, and I just hope that you're a company that, 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 you know, stands by the work. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Alderman Williams?
So, so what has the discussion been on the PLA? What is the percentage or the? You, you received this from Mr. Guernsey. What is he saying as far as minority workforce? Dealing with the women that's going to be on this job and the people of color that's going to be on the job? What is the target percentage that you guys are discussing?
We haven't discussed that yet. I think that's something that we, you know, we, we agree that we will include something along those lines. The exact details, the, the, as I think Mr. Zirkel mentioned, the form PLA that was sent to us was pretty much a carbon copy of what the city entered into for the new fire hall. So it was identical to that and I don't believe that had a minority workforce component to it. But again, you know, we're, you know, we're used to developing affordable developments where there's always a minority workforce component. So I'm sure that we will come to an agreement, you know, it's-
Well, you know, I'm, I'm asking these questions because this council's always fine with the word PLA, not knowing what that means. They just want a PLA. They, they, they don't ask about women. They don't ask about people of color. I, on the other hand, always like to say, well, what, what makes up that PLA? What is that percentage? What are we, what is going to, what is it going to be? Because we have to have that to have a diverse workforce. If you just say PLA and, oh, well, we have the goal of getting this. And then they turn around and say, oh, well, we're going to waive it because we couldn't find, we have to tie that in. Since they want to always bring up having development agreements and always bring up having PLAs, they have to be defined. So I'm asking you, what, what is your commitment going to be on the diversity of that PLA? 20%? 30%? I mean, what?
20% is what I asked last Tuesday, Alderman Williams.
Well, I'm, I'm asking him now.
That's what I requested from him. But if you want me to hold it to make sure we got that in the language for you, we can do that.
Well, I mean, if we, if we can all agree in public and, you know, on the record that it's going to be 20%, I'm fine.
Would you, would you be interested in putting that in amendment so we can just move on?
Well, what we need to do is work through the process because we shouldn't lose sight on city code. City code says 51% residents be hired. So if you look at the city's population, that's a preponderance. But if you're tying to a PLA, the unions are, you know, they're doing school district. That's where this, our PLA came from was school districts. There's a lot of projects happening around Springfield. So, you know, if they don't have the workforce, then they bring from the outside. Well, you have this 51% goal, that's what it is. It's a goal to adhere to. And so in the Poplar Place, which is unique, is that's where we had Calvin Pitts and his training facility and using that. And so if they were not able to, the unions can't meet the minority requirement, that's where the additional discussion has to take place. So there's a lot of moving parts, just like we're talking about right now, right? With the developers' agreement, with the financing, with the PLA. So I think that's something that will have to be a discussion for later. And then you bring it back when we form the TIF and have everything lined up and hopefully wrap it in a nice little bow.
So I just want to make sure you okay with it before moving.
So if it's answered, so if it's contingent on that TIF, then, then there's time to just see what this number is going to be.
And I plan to be at the, I know that during you all's projects, both of you all were at the table to discuss that hiring minority number. So that's what I plan to do as well with the unions and the developer, right?
Yes.
And the administration.
I'm down for us.
Yes, we're going to be working very closely with, with the mayor, with Alderman Purchase. And, you know, we, I gave you a certain commitment at our lunch meeting, so, you know, we're, we're committed to doing this.
Alderman Repath?
We all know that the PLA is negotiated with the unions and you. And the thing is, is that I can tell you that the work, the, all the minority workforce that's in labor is going to be probably employed in this job. Because they don't, I don't know, we have enough, to be honest with you. Every person that's going to be employed-
Well, and, and that's one of the things that we need to really focus on is, is there enough labor? You know, this job will create 400, you know, full year construction jobs. The mayor and I were talking about the transit hub that's being built, you know, so I'm, there, there's a lot of the union labors being, you know, deployed right now. So that is a concern that we have. And, you know, obviously, sometimes they have to bring tradesmen from other areas to, to, to cover it. But, you know, there's going to have to be some discussions. And again, that's what I'm trying to, I, I think that's, the devil's in the details and these are the types of details where those agreements get hung up. So we're committed to doing it. And, you know, the, the mechanics of how we make sure that there is sufficient union labor available and, you know, what the parameters are for out-of-town labor coming in, that's kind of where things get stuck. But, you know, we are committed to doing this and I think we've got a, you know, call it 120-day window during which the TIF process will be running where we're going to have all those discussions. I'm sure I'm going to be meeting with Alderman Purchase and the Builder and Trades Commission and other folks in the next, you know, couple of months here to really iron out those details.
So, so we got it to this point. It's, it's about to be voted on, about to be passed. And the bottom line is, is that the PLA is, has to be negotiated. And, and we, we all agree with the concerns of Alderman Williams and, and others on how that's got to go down. We want minority participation. It's important for us to have a diverse workforce. So we're there. What is the protocol?
Yeah, don't you call, can we call it a question? Call it a question.
No, no, that's not what I was going to do. I was, I was asking Corporation Council.
We have an amendment on the floor.
Amendment, yes.
First you would vote, first you would vote on the amendment, which can be a voice vote, but the vote on the ordinance has to be by-
Well, and then do I withdraw my motion to hold after she, after she-
If you, if you act on the amendment first-
Well, actually, the first motion was to approve.
Correct. You would vote on the amendment first-
I modified that approval.
And then if there is a motion, you know, to place on passage that's second, then you may properly take action on that.
There was a motion to approve and then I made a motion to hold and she made a motion to amend. So it starts with her, then to me, then to that, correct?
Yes, sir.
All right. Let's go.
In order that they're made.
Let's go.
So you're first, Alderman Conley? I did get a second, so let me restate. My, my motion was to include under the developer's obligations and responsibilities, a commitment to enter into PLAs with the appropriate unions in Springfield.
I seconded that.
Any discussion on the amendment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to withdraw my motion to hold.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to withdraw the motion to hold?
Second.
I don't think we have to vote on that, do we?
No. No, if it, if the maker of the motion wants to withdraw it, then it's proper for them to do so.
Thank you.
And then, Mayor, do I make my motion to approve?
To approve as amended?
The amended.
Okay. I make my motion to approve as amended.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, any discussion? All in favor of the motion to approve as amended? Vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open.
I know you're probably sweating right now.
A little bit.
Sometimes I push it twice, sometimes three times. How about tonight, five times? Here we go.
And the motion passes, 10 voting yes and 10 voting no.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone. We appreciate it and we look forward to working with the city and, and bringing this project to fruition.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair will entertain a motion to suspend with rules and place on first reading Agenda number 2022-569, ordinance authorizing the execution of a tentative agreement between the City of Springfield, Office of Public Utilities and the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers, Local 193, for the time period covering June 1st, 2022 through May 31st, 2027.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion to suspend with rules and place on first reading Agenda number 2022-570, ordinance authorizing the execution of a tentative four-year agreement between the City of Springfield, Office of Public Works, Engineer, Technicians, and the International Brotherhood of Teamsters, Chauffeurs, Warehousemen, and Helpers of America Local 916 from July 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2026. Is there a motion?
Go move. Second.
Been moved and seconded, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion to suspend with the rules and place on first reading Agenda number 2022-571, an ordinance authorizing the execution of a four-year tentative agreement with the Laborers International Union of North America, Local 477, from October 1st, 2022 through September 30th, 2027.
Go move.
Second.
Second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Motion carries. And the last one, Chair will entertain a motion to suspend with the rules and place on first reading Agenda number 2022-572, an ordinance authorizing amendment number two to Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, recipient agreement number 20-SR-002, to provide funds to assist the Salvation Army in operating a safety, safety net shelter from January 1st, 2023 through December 31st, 2023, and authorizing payment to the Salvation Army in an amount not to exceed $402,345 for the Office of Planning and Economic Development.
So move. Oh, yes, I'll move. Second.
Been moved and seconded, any discussion?
Yeah, discussion, Mayor. We're suspending with the timelines on this one for first reading. This is $400,000 for a shelter for one year. I, I do expect that we will have people from Salvation Army available next week and at the meeting to answer questions about this. And I would like, just so that everyone knows what I would like to see, I would like details on the programs that they have been provided, providing during the prior year of this, this contract. Number of persons served, agreements moving forward with different mental health providers, education outreach providers in the community to show us what's going to be happening in the shelter to provide meaningful services. So I do expect to have someone here to answer questions, both at committee, the whole, and at the city council meeting.
Yeah, Josh Sabo with the Containment of Care will be here as well as Major Eddy to give the, what's happened this year, but also the transition to the overflow that will be transferring over to helping.
Right. Very specifically, I would like details on the programs that have been provided and details on the programs that will be provided using these funds.
That's what they'll do.
Thank you very much.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Motion carries. Is there any unfinished business come before the city council?
Mr. Mayor?
Alderman Gregory?
So I, I just wanted to quickly ask, and I know it's Christmas, so I'm trying to get out of here. But, you know, we, we just talked about, you know, minority workforces and training. And it just makes me think of the, the CARES Act workforce money that we had assigned to Bone LLC. I, I, I'm not saying that that is the route that we go, but I, I am saying that we need to figure out what, what entity we place that hands in, we place that in so we can develop and train workforce. I think that's one of the last things that we have not addressed with the CARES Act money. And that was, you know, the first money that we got before ARPA, American Rescue Fund. So I think that's really, really important towards, you know, minority goals and, and really trying to get to the percentages that, that we push for. So thank you.
Yeah, they'll be in the budget and part of the budget discussion.
Thank you.
Alderman Purchase?
Thank you. I just wanted to make an announcement that we've been having a good turnout at the holiday walks and this is the last one coming up this Wednesday. And we encourage everybody to come out if you need those last minute, those last minute gifts. And also you still have time to write Santa a letter and go place it in the box downtown. And then just Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
We missed Santa Claus today. I don't know what happened to him. Maybe we're on the naughty list.
Speak for yourself.
I think he's quarantined.
He quarantined?
Any new business come before the city council? Alderman Purchase, or Alderman Donlin?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Real quick, I've had a, this issue has been reoccurring in Ward 9 for quite some time. And, and I appreciate the Police Department and Public Works for their assistance with it. But I wanted to ask generally to all of you, if any of you have had any issues with semi, semi trucks on, parking on the streets in your wards?
Thank you for bringing that up.
Okay, so how many, how many, raise your hand if you don't mind. Okay, so quite a few.
I've put in frequent calls on that.
All right. Well, I'm interested in working with Corporation Council on developing an ordinance to address that issue. If any of you have any thoughts, please see me individually and-
Alderman Donlin, I will be working with you on that, absolutely.
And Merry Christmas, everyone.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Absolutely.
The other piece of new business, the election objection hearing is Thursday at noon. That's for the individuals that's been contested. I think that's it. I think we had Sam Cameron signed up to speak.
I think he's passed.
Okay.
Remember?
I just, thank you, Mayor. I just, I signed up to speak for the locks on Madison and you guys passed that. So it's kind of a moot point, but I will wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy Hanukkah and thank the mayor for coming to the menorah lighting ceremony with Senator Durbin on the ice-cold Sunday. And if you missed that, you still have an opportunity to come to the menorah lighting ceremony at the White Oaks Mall. I think you're going to be there on Thursday at 5:30. So Happy Hanukkah, Merry Christmas.
Happy Hanukkah, Merry Christmas.
Is there, Barb Jones, I think, had signed up to speak. Is she here? Barb Jones. Is there a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Motion for dismissal? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you.